At this time, I would like to call the October 3, 2023 Stanley County Board of Education Meeting to order. Welcome to those of you here in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and for your support of Stanley County Schools. The flowers that are placed in front of us this evening are in memory of a precious Norwood Elementary School student, Leo George, that recently lost his life along with his parents in a tragic car accident. Our thoughts and our prayers are with the George family and our Norwood Elementary students, teachers, staff, and community as they are processing this difficult grief and sorrow in the days ahead. We pray that God will continue to provide peace and comfort to their hurting hearts. At this time, I would like to call on Ms. Robin Whitaker for our invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag. Let us pray.
Dear Heavenly Father, we pause before the start of this school board meeting to lift up our hearts to you in prayer and also, Lord, for the many thanksgivings and the mercies that you show us. Lord, we seek your favor as we prepare to make plans for the future of our school system. We lift up each staff member and each student that's sitting in our classrooms each day, Lord, as well as every member of this board. Lord, we ask your continued blessings over each and every life, that they would seek your wisdom and guidance. Lord, that we would seek your courage and strength in all the issues that we deal with and, Lord, in everything that touches our lives daily. Lord, just keep us humble before you and give us the integrity to stand up for what we believe in your name. So, Lord, into your hands we place this meeting. We are trusting you to lead and guide us tonight as we seek your continued protection over our schools each and every day. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some outstanding recognitions at this time on the agenda. I am going to turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Each month, Stanley County Schools is proud to recognize two classified employees and two certified employees through the Stanley Star Awards Program. These employees were nominated by their principal, who also shared brief overviews of why they were nominated. This month, we are proud to recognize our Stanley Stars at Albemarle Middle School and Norwood Elementary School. Employees were surprised at school by a visit from Dr. Dennis and were provided a $25 gift card sponsored by the Nehemiah Project. We would like to thank the Nehemiah Project for their generous donation of $1,500 that covers the cost of these awards. So as I call your names, Stanley Stars, please step forward with your principal to accept the certificate and take pictures. So from Norwood, we have Joellen Teeter and Kathy Holland. While they're walking to the front, I'd like to share a little bit what Ms. Blazer wrote about these wonderful staff members. Ms. Holland is the heartbeat of Norwood Elementary. Having served the school for 44 years, she has impacted multiple generations of Norwood families. She is the front office secretary, the nurse, the student and family advocate, custodian, and part-time detective. Ms. Holland makes every student and staff member who walks in the building feel like they are the most important person and that they are loved. Congratulations, Ms. Holland. Joellen Teeter is our certified Stanley Star from Norwood, and Ms. Blazer wrote, "Ms. Teeter is one of our self-contained EC teachers. Every day, her classroom is filled with the joy of learning. Every student that walks in her room is loved and feels like they are the most important person in the world. She ensures that her EC students have the opportunity to be part of classes with their non-disabled peers, making her the epitome of inclusivity. She has established an environment where her students are not defined by their disabilities, but thrive because of them." Our next Stanley Stars are from Albemarle Middle School. If they could come forward, please. Danielle Rodenhour and Holly Lottaker. Along with Ms. McLendon. And Ms. McLendon wrote, "Ms. Rodenhour has a full-time classroom known as the PAWS class in 6th grade. PAWS stands for Positive Academics with Students, where she implements activities that enrich the core curriculum. While she completes activities that the teachers have her do, she also takes it upon herself to create activities that are determined by the needs of each student. The students respect and enjoy being in her class, and she builds strong relationships with her students and her parents. Albemarle Middle School is proud to call her a star. Congratulations, Ms. Rodenhour." And the certified staff member at Albemarle Middle School, Holly Lottaker. Ms. Lottaker is an 8th grade ELA teacher and one of our athletic directors with boundless energy. She believes strongly in bell-to-bell instruction and students overcoming any circumstance to achieve their greatest potential. She has a strong work ethic and expects the best from her students and her colleagues. Albemarle Middle School is proud to call her a Stanley Star. Congratulations, Ms. Lottaker.
I believe we want to take a few pictures.
And if they can just stay up here, too, for the next...
Thank you, Board Chair.
I would like for them just to stay up here as well. You want me to recognize you? You're going to recognize...
No, you go ahead. Well, I can. So this month is National Principals Month for the month of October. We have a lot of our extending principals here out in the audience. They were here for a meet and greet for some new employees earlier, and we'd like them to stand and be recognized.
I would really like for you, Dr. Dennis, can you call them by name and their school, and could they come up here and stand as well?
Yeah, come up. I will soon as they get up here, yeah. Come on, guys.
Didn't know this was going to happen to you.
We have Ms. Merritt, Stanville Elementary School. Ms. McLendon, Albemarle Middle School. We have Ms. Taylor, who is at East Albemarle Elementary School. New to us is Ms. Blazer, who's at Norwood. Ms. Dombrowski is at Stanley STEM Early College. Ms. Simmons, who is at the Stanley Early College. We have Ms. Brooke Davis, who is at Richfield Elementary School. Also new to roll, Ms. Fur, who is at North Stanley Middle School. Ms. Fallon at South Stanley High School. Ms. Hathcock, and you are at Aquadale Elementary School. Ms. Russell at North Stanley High School. And who can forget Mr. Rose, West Stanley High School. Thank you.
Board members, while they are taking pictures, I'm going to ask them to please stand up, stay up here, because I would like for us to go around and tell them, all of them, every single person that's up here, just how much we appreciate them.
I'm going to have to get out of here.
I believe now is Barry.
Yes, I am.
Thank you for being here.
How are you all doing tonight? Good deal. All right. This has to do with the school, as far as buses. All right. I am addressing you tonight as a parent and a former assistant of head of transportation for a school district. Our main job was and should always be safety in transporting our children, which this district has failed to do. I also get bus driver shortage is statewide, nationwide. Surrounding areas have solved their issues by hiring higher wages for their bus drivers. I personally live in an area that has new housing going up from Hatley Barris to Elm Street, and my neighborhood sits in the middle. There are a few buses that run past our neighborhood or a mile or two away. The new neighborhoods on Hatley Barris, riders, they ride Bus 68 in the morning, but they're transferred to Bus 56 in the afternoon. In the afternoon, due to we don't have an afternoon bus half the time. I am not sure if the people you have hired for decided to just not do their job or only interested in the new communities. The new neighborhood buses are 68 went through the same thing last year. They couldn't pass a permanent driver to 68 and share this issue. My grandson has an IEP, and because of this has to be in school. He will graduate in 2025, and because of the bus situation, you are denying him his education. He starts his internship today and will be working for his grades. So we asked for an IEP meeting to try to recertify that problem, and your county worker had no solution. She said, yeah, she should have advocated for him. Instead, she tried to get out of making up and missed EC hours. Due to this bus situation, this district has a bus last year not run from October to June.
Barry, I know that your time is up. I want you to know that I think every board member up here has heard what you have had to say. I am going to ask that if you, Mr. Lynn Plummer, could, he has mentioned something about the child and an IEP. Could you please talk with him further and as to who he may talk with here in our county office? Mr. Lynn Plummer is right over there, Barry. Could you possibly speak with him? And we've heard what you've had to say, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter and Dr. Dennis. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to enter into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1; Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. May I have a motion?
I make a motion and go into closed session.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Whitaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The board is now in closed session. For our administrators, our Stanley Star recipients, I know you have very long days, and we thank you for being here. If you feel at this time that you would like to leave, we will be in closed session for a while. Thank you. Once again, welcome to those that are here in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. Next on our agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by majority vote off the board. We have board docs that provides us a three-minute timer, and I will let you know when your three minutes is up. Board members will not be responding to individuals who address the board, except to request any clarification or points that's made by the presenter. The first person I have, and I'm not sure if I will pronounce the last name correctly, Harold Schumaker. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Harold Schumaker, I'm actually from Waxahaw. Got some comments here that I've given in Union County as well, but I want to share with you some indisputable evidence that vaccines cause injury and death. The evidence is actually codified in law and in our court system. Do any of you, I'm curious, do any of you guys know what the name of the 1986 law, which gave vaccine manufacturers immunity from prosecution and liability protection and created a separate court system? It was called the National Childhood Vaccine Injury Act of 1986. The name of the law says it all. In this law, you'll find the word injury 143 times, the word death 93 times. Safe and effective, zero times. The law is very clear. Vaccines cause injury and death. The Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, the court system set up to award payments for injury claims, has paid out over $4 billion in claims. Clearly, by its function, it confirms they cause injury and death. There are about 400 or so chronic illnesses facing our children today. Do anyone else you can find this list? You can find it on the vaccine inserts. Again, it clearly tells us they cause injury and death. The word safe, what it really means is liability-free, and effective means profitable. They extended the shots from 11 in 1986 to 18 initially because they're liability-free and profitable, then to 24, then to 72 today. The only reason is because they're liability-free. That's it. A famous Voltaire quote is, "Those that can be made to believe absurdities can be made to commit atrocities." It's an absurdity to believe increasing shots from 10 to 72 makes our children healthier. It's an absurdity to believe protecting the vaccine supply chain at the cost of our children's health is in the best public interest. The 1986 law did have one component that was there for children and parents. The law requires safety testing and biannual reporting to Congress. This has not been adhered to for the last 32 years. They refuse to follow the law. I have a stipulation order here where the Department of Health and Human Service admits that they have not done a single safety study since the law was passed. There is no safety studying. You probably rely on your local health department, who relies on the state health department, who relies on the CDC, who relies on the vaccine manufacturers to do the testing. For instance, when Prevnar-13 was approved by the FDA, they did a control trial against Prevnar-7. Prevnar-7 had 7.2% serious adverse events. Prevnar-13 had 8.2%. The FDA deemed it equally safe. The truth is, it's equally dangerous. That's 320,000 injuries out of 4 million babies born each year. There's no safety studies that are being done, so there should be no vaccine enforcement to attend school. So I'm going to ask you today to stop supporting the atrocity of injuring children for profit. Protect your children, not Big Pharma profits. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker.
Okay, Susan, I'm not sure about the last name. And then I have Barry. Now, do y'all want to speak? Are you speaking like on the same topic? Do you want to speak?
You kind of changed it up a little bit.
Okay.
It's basically the same topic, but it's not.
Okay.
It's coming from two separate, different situations, if that would be...
Okay. Susan, what, tell me the last name.
It's Dykes.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight to speak for the kids that attend public school in Stanley County. Stanley County is listed third fastest-growing county in North Carolina, but our school officials have not added any infrastructure support to be able to keep up with the growing area. But there you sit. We have overcrowded schools, classrooms, and buses. Our children's education is suffering, and there you sit. You voted to go back to school knowing we had a shortage of teachers as well as bus drivers, and there you sit. We have reached out to the county to receive nothing but excuses and a lot of, I understand, man's. That don't mean a thing, but there you sit. In my case, the school did find a solution for the bus, but the county person turned it down. Why should they? They received their raises, while we received excuse after excuse. It has been said that our children are our future, but here in Stanley County, they feel like they're the throwaways, the kids left behind. People don't decide their future, they decide their habits, and the habits of this school board is despicable. It is used to be that there was no kids left behind, but here in Stanley County, this board stands for the child forgotten and dismissed. But things have to change, and the only way they're going to change is if you do better, if we do better, if we improve our children's lives and education. This is the chance for you to help the students and do the job that you were voted to do, and that's to stand for the kids. I say this because our county has done nothing but make excuses about the bus shortages. I get we have it, but in the area that I live, there's buses running over top of each other. We have new neighborhoods that are getting their children riding our bus, but because we don't have a full-time afternoon bus driver, the new neighborhoods get to, in the afternoon, ride a separate bus, but in the morning, they're on our bus. But that's how close, they're less than a mile away from our neighborhood. So I don't know exactly what's going on, but we need to find a solution, and your county people aren't doing it, so I need you guys to do it for them. I need you to hold them accountable, and that's all I'm asking. I'm asking for solutions, not excuses. Thank you.
I believe now is Barry. I'm assuming you're related, Barry?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for being here.
How are you all doing tonight? Good deal. All right. This has to do with the school, as far as buses. All right. I am addressing you tonight as a parent and a former assistant of head of transportation for a school district. Our main job was and should always be safety in transporting our children, which this district has failed to do. I also get bus driver shortage is statewide, nationwide. Surrounding areas have solved their issues by hiring higher wages for their bus drivers. I personally live in an area that has new housing going up from Hatley Barris to Elm Street, and my neighborhood sits in the middle. There are a few buses that run past our neighborhood or a mile or two away. The new neighborhoods on Hatley Barris, riders, they ride Bus 68 in the morning, but they're transferred to Bus 56 in the afternoon. In the afternoon, due to we don't have an afternoon bus half the time. I am not sure if the people you have hired for decided to just not do their job or only interested in the new communities. The new neighborhood buses are 68 went through the same thing last year. They couldn't pass a permanent driver to 68 and share this issue. My grandson has an IEP, and because of this has to be in school. He will graduate in 2025, and because of the bus situation, you are denying him his education. He starts his internship today and will be working for his grades. So we asked for an IEP meeting to try to recertify that problem, and your county worker had no solution. She said, yeah, she should have advocated for him. Instead, she tried to get out of making up and missed EC hours. Due to this bus situation, this district has a bus last year not run from October to June.
Barry, I know that your time is up. I want you to know that I think every board member up here has heard what you have had to say. I am going to ask that if you, Mr. Lynn Plummer, could, he has mentioned something about the child and an IEP. Could you please talk with him further and as to who he may talk with here in our county office? Mr. Lynn Plummer is right over there, Barry. Could you possibly speak with him? And we've heard what you've had to say, and I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I have Lauren Jones and Carly Jones. Now, again, your topic here is just bus. Do you want to speak together?
I would like to stand with my daughter so she's not so.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
I'll go first, but she actually wrote her own little speech, so I think y'all would be.
Okay, that would be fine, and she can stand, or you can stand with her, or she can come up here with you now.
You want to come up with that?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here again. But I do want to let y'all know that I am here for all the healthcare workers that work 12-hour shifts and have to leave, and have to leave their patients to pick up their children from school, because at the last minute, the school has informed them that they do not have a ride home. How are they supposed to take care of their patients and have to pick up their kids at the same time, instead of depending on the school transportation? I am here for the disabled grandparents whose spouse is the sole provider, and now every Thursday and Friday, he has to take off of work early and lose hours to go pick up grandchildren from school. Don't they already have enough on their plate? They've raised children already. Can we take it a little bit easier on them? I am here of the mom of two who just had a newborn, who has been up crying all night. And when the baby finally gets to go to sleep, or she gets the baby to go to sleep, all the mom wants to do is try to catch a nap before round two begins. But now she can't because she's got another phone call that the bus is no longer running. I am here for all the single moms and the single dads, as such as myself, that work two jobs to put food on the table. Therefore, they depend on little Tommy's mom to bring them to school and from, because she is at work and cannot get to the schoolhouse in time to get their children. Same goes for some two-parent households. Both of the parents are working. I have personally sent out countless of text messages to my kids that says, mommy's not making it today, see if little Tommy's mom can take you home. The point is, it really doesn't matter what these family situations are. When will you begin to realize that there's a significant amount of families that have been affected by the situation, not just mine? We need a solution, and I can think of a few if you're willing to hear me out. Let's start by giving the bus drivers a raise. They really honestly do deserve $15 an hour, more than that. I mean, I don't even want to put up with my kids for $15 an hour, let alone 60. I find it ironic that if it's an important matter that is like for you guys, such as personal raises or promotions, or you'll get those approved and do what you need to do because it's on your agenda, but let's try to push a little bit harder for the families of Stanley County. Find a solution. Okay. Yet you do not push the state harder to find a solution when you have all the ones, when you have all the right connections to utilize those, meaning like y'all have more connections than I do. I can't just walk up there and be like, give me a frickin' bus. But the past couple of weeks, I have been hearing a lot of excuses, but we need solutions, not excuses. In the meantime, inconvenience yourselves like the bus situation has inconvenienced all of your families. Be more like Brunswick Central School District Formal Superintendent Angela Maloney, who went out there and got behind a driver's seat to get these kids to school. She says that the shortage of buses made it crucial for her to get up and get behind her desk to do something about it. She felt like she had an obligation to be part of the solution so that children and parents didn't have to suffer.
Lauren, I know your time's up, okay? Again, we have heard what you have said. There's been a couple of different speakers, and I've watched board members up here writing down really some specific things that you have said. So I appreciate it. Thank you. And I want to hear from Carly.
Hi, my name is Carly, and I attend West Stanley Middle School with my brother. My mom has been our sole provider since my father passed away in 2018. She's a really great mom, and she works long hours at work. She even finds time to cook us dinner before she leaves that afternoon. She does all of this again the next day. She spends times with those kids when she can and provides everything we need and more, even though our father is gone. So we take up the issue about the bus and how it affects her work schedule. If she misses any time away from work, it cuts her check short, and I cannot do the activities I want to do because it costs her money and neither can my siblings. I thought of some solutions and brought them here to you. Can you start raising the bus drivers' wages? They deserve way more than 15 hours. And Union County and in McLeverford County, start paying their bus drivers $18 an hour. And I don't know about you, but I don't like worrying about how I get home every day. In order to look, in order do I like sitting on the dirty bus floors or falling out of very packed seats because there's way too many kids on our bus? It's not safe either. One of my friends fell out of her seat and hit her head on the seat in the process. Or start struggling the school's starting times farther apart. Another idea, it's a little crazy, but you know how we pay for school lunches? And there's a school reduced lunch form, free reduced bus riders. I know it might be a hard one to figure out, but I don't, it's not my job to do that. And I can think of, I can think of other solutions, but isn't it your job to find one and put one into action? And yes, it's a national issue and a state issue, but that's not, but that is nothing but an excuse. And set an example and fix the problem. Other states are, please and thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Stay up here. I believe every person on this board, we certainly hear what you've said. We love that when we've also heard people with solutions. Some of the solutions we are working on, we are working hard on. And I think probably one of our board members may, in his closing comments, he might allude to that. But Carly, I just want to say I'm impressed with you coming and speaking before the board. I think that's bravery, and I like the fact that you presented a problem, but then you also presented solutions. And that's really a part of an argumentative paper later when you are working in class. But I'm proud of you. Thank you for speaking to us. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me.
Next, I have Mr. Shane Almond. Do you really want to follow this young lady, Mr. Shane Almond?
No.
We remember you as a student, too.
Maybe if I get down.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Shane Almond, Millanport District is where I live. I think recently I heard that this board made a motion to have two new high schools. And that's all, I'm all for new schools or revamping schools, but first you have to fix the problem. And the first problem you have to fix, just like these folks, is you have to hold city councils of the cities, towns, and municipals, hold them responsible for the developments that are such at a fast pace that it's coming without adequate facilities and staffing the schools. It all starts with them. We had no issues, well, we always had issues, but until uncontrolled development started. I would never stand behind a bond referendum that I have no voice about. Y'all have no voice. You can build all the schools you want until you handle the development that's coming. If you build two new schools tomorrow, what's going to be the next day and the next? And if you didn't know this, in Locust, True Homes has almost purchased 1,000 acres in Locust. What are they going to do with that? Build homes. Admiral, just recently online, they said they expect 4,000 new residents. And out of that residents, on y'all's study that you did last year, there's .40 average students per residential home. So out of 4,000 residents, that means 2,000 kids, roughly, close to 2,000 kids. So is two high schools going to even do it if you build two new high schools? So how do we make them, how do we keep them accountable? How do we bring them to the table? It might be bold, but you let schools overcrowd. You don't build schools. You let them, all citizens have to go to them city council meetings and demand they do something for the land use. Our county passed a land use plan, and it doesn't have squat to do with the cities. So y'all hold them accountable. Y'all bring them and make them come to these meetings. They should have to sit down with y'all to have a plan. They should sit down here where the public can hear. And if they don't, don't build new schools. Put the blame on them. Make, do social media through the news. Put the blame on them. They're the ones that creates the problem. Why should my taxpayers' money go to fund schools when they keep building, keep building, and all they keep is a rent? They get the tax revenue off of it. Anything they get, does it go to the school system? Does it help in any way? And until you do this, until you have a way that you can bring them to the table, it shouldn't be on a ballot. It shouldn't be on a ballot for 2024. And if it does go on a ballot, and the county's people like myself, they won't vote for it. If you want the county to participate and vote for more schooling, or vote for more schools, or to revamp them, whatever, you have to hold the cities, towns, and municipals accountable. Because I was surprised that I talked to somebody here and said the Admiral City Council wouldn't even meet with y'all. They refused to meet. And I think that Caesar, I don't know if y'all know him, the Locust City Council, or the Locust City Planner, you know, I talked to him, and I couldn't find out that he had talked to the superintendent here and that there's a development that has been okay, that gave the thumbs up for 285 homes. I don't think it should have been a decision that he and the city planner made. He should have come here in front of y'all, because everybody has different opinions. Do I think Locust, and every one of those kids are going to go to Locust or West Stanley? So 285 homes, if half of those are children, 135 children, is there room at Locust?
Okay, Shane, I know your time's up. Wait, stay up there. I just, you know, I appreciate what you have to say. I've appreciated being able to talk with you before, and I think some other board members have spoken with you as well. We recently had a joint meeting with our Admiral City Council. And, you know, and I know that I spoke with you about how we will meet with other municipalities as well. But thank you. I mean, I enjoy you being here and expressing your viewpoints, and I think you have viewpoints that you might want to take in other areas as well. Thank you. Thank you to all of those who spoke tonight. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda with the approval of the minutes. And board members, you've had a chance to look at these. For the September 5, 2023 regular meeting, the September 18, 2023 work session meeting, September 20, 23 special called meeting, and the September 27, 2023 work session. If there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion by Ms. Poplin is there, second? Second by Mr. Lisk. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have committee reports. So starting with facilities, Ms. Carla Poplin.
Thank you. I guess it's fitting that I follow up Mr. Almond's comment. We did meet with Admiral City Council to go over future growth plans and growth for the surrounding areas. Can you hear me? Sorry. Future growth plans and growth for surrounding areas. That meeting went well as far as discussion, but there was some concern that they are looking at possibly the addition of 4,000 homes in the city and the surrounding area of the city, areas they've annexed into the city. So we're going to continue those meetings, and we do have plans to meet with the municipalities from other cities and speak as part of our future facility plans and get all that together here soon. So those meetings, just look out. We should be in your area before too long, Shane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Finance, Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We didn't have a finance committee meeting, but we did table our ESS contract review to the work session back on September 27. And if you're not familiar with ESS, that is a private company that provides the school system substitute teachers and teacher assistants. It was a contract entered into late 2018 by the former board and superintendent at that time, and it had a five-year term on it with a renewal every year. That term is up, and so some of the things that we were reviewing is moving on past that, where we hire our own teacher assistants that work for the school system, teacher assistants that drive buses. That is part of the agreement when you come on as a teacher assistant. I looked at the contract, probably some of my personal and some, I guess, things we needed to look at as a committee was non-solicit in the agreement. It was a favorable one-sided contract where it was that ESS, we could not hire their employees without their written permission, but they could take our employees. And that is seemingly what happened. Part of the contract was using our resources, our social media, our marketing resources, having links on our website, and essentially using a lot of our taxpayer dollars to do their private recruitment efforts. Bus drivers. Comes to my attention that we allegedly have 10 people interested in driving a bus that worked for ESS. It's the first that I heard, but that has not happened. When I look at pay comparable, ESS teacher assistant is paid $16.72 an hour. The committee looked at compensation for a Stanley County Schools employee. And just to remind the public, we're not a taxing authority. We don't have the ability to fund at any level that we want to. We're beholding to what the county provides us, that being a commissioner board. And in the last two budget requests, we have asked for substantial raises across the classified staff. That requires funding, but we can only allocate per bus driver or TA or any substitute what we're provided from the county. So the committee looked at that. It went to the board. The board has to make a decision on how we're going to proceed for the remainder of the school year. Looking at that, a Stanley County Schools teacher assistant with the bonuses have received $16.39 per hour. If you look at what they receive in a pension, what they receive in added health care, we come out to around $26.45 as total compensation per hour. So there is a difference. The board has to weigh that. And what we can do from an HR perspective in hiring this, where we have the control of the employee, where we can fill spots when we need to. And the board was going to make a decision, but the contract did not have our non-solicit in there. So I think the superintendent has gone back with ESS, and that's sort of where the committee and the board has to decide what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. I realize that I think you might have had a question or a comment, but we don't usually do that now. So if that's something that, like at the end of the meeting, or someone may reach out to you to see what your response or your question may be, then we'll gladly take that. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lisk. Instructional program, Mr. Bill Sorenson.
The committee hasn't met since our last board meeting, but I am going to start a little buzz here. Went to the DLI presentation at Indy last night, and we look, we're still in some of. in some of your thunder, man. I'm sorry. We're looking to expand that as an incredible program that's doing more good than the dual language. It's actually affecting the student scores in other classes. So I'm excited about that.
Thank you. And I'm assuming at some time, Mr. Plummer, you'll present to us with all of that. I know we're excited to hear more. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Marketing and community engagement, Ms. Watson.
No report.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Whitaker.
The policy committee has not met since our last board meeting, but we do have, as you see on the agenda, I believe there are 14 policies there that have been tabled for 30 days and that will need your approval tonight. These are on board docs, so if anyone would like to see those policies, I'm not going to read each one of them, but we do need the board's approval on those.
Okay, at this time, and I know we've all had a chance to look at those since they've been tabled, at this time, I need a motion to approve the tabled policies as presented.
I make a motion, will you approve the tabled policies as presented?
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. A second by Mr. Lisk. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, these policies have been approved. Thank you.
There are also, you will see, there are 18 policies there that have been rescinded, and basically, these policies were just replaced by the ones that we just voted on.
Okay, so I don't need, we don't need an action on this. Okay. We do on the rescinded?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion then at this time to approve the policies that have been rescinded.
I make a motion, will you approve the policies that are up for rescension?
Okay, a motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, these policies have been approved to be rescinded. Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. You don't have anything else? Right, okay. Safety and security, Dr. Lefler.
No report.
Thank you. Next, we have curriculum and instruction. Do you have anything tonight, Mr. Plummer?
No.
Thank you. Auxiliary services, Mr. Dudney.
Just like to briefly tell you that our 10-day window for the budget has expired as of yesterday. So now we have a legal budget that has been approved from the state. I've already received documentation now on how to implement pay raises and, and how the allotments and stuff will be coming down within the next week. So I just want to let y'all know and be aware of that.
And so I know that our finance committee has a meeting set. It's more, I think, the end of the month, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
October 30th.
So is there a way of, I guess I'm wanting to see what exactly, how all that's looking. Do we wait till October 30th, or is that?
I think the way we understand it is all employees understood the raises were coming.
Right.
It had been notified, and that, that now as of October the 2nd, that is funded.
Okay, okay. All right.
It's a retroactive.
Okay, all right.
Retroactive to the start of the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dudney.
And I apologize, Mr. Dudney. You did ask me to say that.
That's okay.
Next, we have superintendent comments, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you. I have a few comments as far as recognitions. October 2nd, School Custodians' Appreciation Day. October 6th, National Coach Day. October 9th through 13th is National School Lunch Week. And October 23rd through the 31st is National Red Ribbon Week. Earlier, we introduced our principals for National Principals Month. There's also National Bullying Prevention Month and National Physical Therapy Month. I will be attending the State Board Education Meeting tomorrow for our region, so I'll be leaving after this to make my way up to Raleigh. And the North Carolina School Board Association Fall Law Conference is October 11th through the 13th. I know some of you will probably be attending that. Thank you.
And as a board, we also extend to you that we know it's an honor that you've been chosen as the superintendent representative from our district. And thank you. Next is board member comments. Ms. Whitaker, I will call on you first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate the Stanley Stars. I think anytime we can recognize our employees, we should do that. Also, our principals, I think we are, we are very, very fortunate at the principals that we have on staff in our schools daily. And I'm very thankful for the job that you guys do. It's not an easy one, and we don't take that for granted. So do know that we are very appreciative of that. I just wanted to tell Carly that spoke, I know Madam Chair said that, you know, anytime we have a student that will come and take the time to speak, it says a lot. It's not the easiest thing to do, to stand up and speak in front of a group of people. But we did hear what you're saying, and we do, we thank you for, for taking the time to do that as, as one of our students. You know, our, our school system has a lot to be thankful for. We do understand that there's a shortage in bus drivers. We also understand that our bus drivers are very underpaid, as well as a lot of our staff. Hopefully, we will see those raises in the next couple of weeks, maybe, Mr. Dudney. So, you know, at, at least, we, we do see something coming down the pike for our employees. So, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for, but we, we have a long ways to go also. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Mr. Sorenson, I'm going to call on you next.
I'd just like to echo what she said as far as the crowd that was standing in front of us earlier. I am in awe of our principals and our star teachers and the staffs at our schools. They're, they're working miracles on a shoestring budget. Now, it just, it just is what it is. And I'd also like to comment real quick. I attended the, meet at the pole at Norwood last week. And you got to love your kids, you got to take care of your kids, because life is just so fragile.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Watson.
Well, I will ditto everything they've said, too. I'm really proud of our principals. I think we have some great principals in our schools. And all of our teaching staff, I do appreciate everything they do for us and for these students. We've got some, we've got a good system here. And I'm very, very proud of Dr. Dennis, for his accomplishment being the superintendent from our district, region, whatever. He knows what I'm talking about. So anyway, I hope everybody has a good weekend, good rest of the school year, and do your best.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Dr. Lefler.
I would like to congratulate the Stanley Stars, because if you look at our schools, we talk about our administration, teachers, principals, but it doesn't run without the bus drivers and the cafeteria people and the people cleaning the floors and all that. Without them, it does not operate. So we really appreciate them and wish we could pay them more. Also, as far as the buses, this board over the last six months has been working on that. And it seems like we're getting closer, but it's not an excuse, but it is a statewide and a national problem. And even in these districts like Mecklenburg and Union County, who pay a lot more than we do, they're having issues also. So it's a, it's a nationwide problem, and we're going to have to work on it. Because over the next several years, our teaching schools do not have many graduates at all. So we're really going to have a teacher crisis pretty soon if, if it doesn't change some way. But we're all working very hard on it, and, and we would like for things to get better and do better, because you're, they're our schools and our students, and we want them all to get the best they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lefler. Ms. Poplin.
I just wanted to congratulate everybody tonight that was standing up here, our principals and our Stanley Stars. Quite a few of those my kids have had in class or had as a principal. So it was nice to see all those faces up here tonight. And I just wanted to say, I've been able to start back lunch buddies here the last couple of weeks. So I'm back eating with my kids for the last few weeks. And if you guys have a moment or a few minutes, you know, we all kind of sit here and talk about what we can do for our kids. But there's a huge need in our schools right now for mentors for children, and that goes for each and every school. I'm sure every principal that was here earlier could tell you a couple of students at their school that could use a friendly face at least once a week. Those lunches only last about 20, 25 minutes. So if you can offer 25 minutes once a week, I highly suggest that. I think you'll be blessed more than the, more than the kids. And I just, congratulations to Dr. Dennis. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the speakers. Carly, it's, it's awesome to get up here and speak. I don't think I had the bravery to do that at, at your age. It was, I was very nervous in college in a communications class. It was something you definitely learn and develop a skill at. But I did write down, I wanted to kind of address one of your questions on, on the pay raises. How this government is structured is, we, we don't have any ability to, to raise revenue other than private donations or, we're, majority of our funding comes directly from the state. You have limited flexibility. We receive federal grants. That has almost literally zero flexibility in how you can use the money. And then we get a very small portion from our county, which is usually unrestricted, meaning that if we wanted to, you know, put on a roof or give a bonus, that we can. Now, with that said, there's 100 counties in North Carolina and 115 school districts, and the last ranking that we had, we ranked 94th. We're probably, last I checked, around number 43 as far as size of our county relative to, to the other counties. I do think our commissioners are making steps forward in helping us to fund that. We have asked for, for those raises for bus drivers and some of our classified staff. Again, the cost of a lot of things are going up, and so what we're having to ask for is, is going up. But it is a high priority for us. Just as I mentioned before in our committee comments about ESS and, which is a, the private employment agency, our ability to bring that position back under the, the county control gives us the option to, to use these folks as bus drivers, should they be willing to do so. So we, I, I think we are looking at solutions. Recently, there were some bonuses that, that came out. We were able to allocate federal grants that way. And, and when that money's gone, it's gone. And, and we're back to, you know, only being able to use local dollars or county dollars. So I do know that this committee and the board is very committed to that. I believe we're, we have 10 bus driver vacancies. That's down from 13, if I remember correctly, maybe in the spring. And I live in Stanfield, Mr. and Mrs. Dykes, so I know exactly what, what you're talking about out there. And I'm going to go to my good friend Shane back here, our, our farmer friend from North Stanley. The sales tax, there's a quarter cent sales tax countywide that the, the county probably voted on four or five different times before it passed. And that's one bucket of money that, that comes to the school system. I think that, I can't remember the number right off the top of my head, what that is, but as the county has grown a little bit, that, that number has gone up. But the reality is just a drop in the bucket for what has to be done. Regarding facilities, these buildings are, are really old. I, I don't think, in my opinion, that buildings teach children. You could slap a metal building up or concrete brick, or do it like the churches do under a tent, and you could teach children. So I think, you know, our position is, is as a board, we can do some of the things, I, I agree, in holding accountable and advocating. But at the end of the day, we, we literally don't have any control over what the municipalities does and what, how they choose to grow. I grew up on a, my grandfather was a line of dairy farmers, too. So I completely understand and probably share a lot of the same sentiments that you do. But when it comes to our school system and, you know, how like I'm tasked as being elected up here, I look at myself both legally and in the role as being a fiduciary of the tax dollar, of the taxpayer. And how can we, as a school board, provide the best curriculum opportunities for all students and, and using our money wisely? And I, I think that's, you know, there is no other magical pot of money laying around. We get, I think, this year, three and a half million dollars in capital outlay funds. Most of that this year has already been used or is allocated to be completed very soon for just some lipstick and rouge, so to speak. It's, it's repairing things that are just going to continue to break. So it is going to take the will of the people to decide. And, and being that North Carolina is the ninth state to become a universal school choice, how are we going to compete using our tax dollars to provide effective curriculum opportunities for all the students? And I think that's, that's where we're, we're tasked and charged and where we're going out talking to folks like you and meeting with the councils. And really, I think, how I heard you, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll finish on this, that there needs to be more communication and integration amongst the, the county and the municipalities on how we can work together, because it does frustrate me, too, when we have all of this growth. My son's in Locust. They just turned the music room into a classroom. So now music is, is on a cart. And amp, maybe art, music, physical education. And so that's what's happening. Stanfield, we put mobiles out there. Oakboro, I think we have 60 seats left. Indy, we're having the addition on. We haven't even got to Albemarle yet, where we're having some of the, the same concerns. And you're on the northern end, and you're just, you're just right there at it. So when we did that demographic study, a lot of our places are going into the red, meaning that they're overcrowded. And that's also not fair to the parents and, and the, the students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. I'm just going to ditto what everyone has said. It was wonderful tonight as far as the recognitions. And it was great having our principals here. Dr. Dennis, I hope that you will let them know that, that means a lot when we see our principals. And, and I know it's a long day and a long night for you, and some of you are still here. But it means a lot, because you know we support you. And it's just like, we have that support back. And I really appreciate that. It is hard when we put flowers. It seems like almost every month that here lately, we've lost a student or over the past few years. It is very hard. And I hope that we will all remember the Leo George family. And I wanted to say that I know Memorial Baptist Church in Norwood is doing, there's a link, and, and they're trying to raise some funds for this family. And if you go on that site with Memorial Baptist Church, you will be able to see that. And if you feel led to make a donation, certainly, it will be much appreciated. I do want to say one more time, thank you to our speakers. I'm sorry I'm not giving you as much recognition, Shane, okay, as I am Carly. But Carly, you know, being a teacher, I, I love when, when our students get up here. And I love when our students are, are brave enough to speak and brave enough to do some research, and they give solutions. And, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe we hear from you again, if you're willing to do that. I believe you have some leadership skills. And this, and it shows that, that you have the leadership skills. And I hope one day, maybe you see that, maybe you want to go into education and be a teacher. You've got wonderful teachers definitely out there where you are at, or all through school you have. So you certainly have some leadership skills. But thank you for speaking. The date and the time of our next board meeting will be Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 6:15 PM in the Jean McIntyre Room. I do not believe we need to go back into closed session for anything. So next is Personnel, Administrative Student Services, Dr. Carter. So next is Personnel Administrative Student Services, Dr. Carter.
Madam Chair and board members, if I may draw your attention to the personnel agenda. You have two sections. The first section requires no action for your information purposes only. The second section does require your action and I am respectfully requesting your approval.
May I have a motion, board members, to approve section two of the personnel agenda as presented?
I make a motion when you approve section two of the personnel agenda as presented.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Section two has been approved. Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I do want to say again, welcome to Sumy County, okay, staff that we have. It's great that you are here. And I believe that is it. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lisk, a second. Second by Ms. Poplin, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. We are adjourned.